The call to meeting is ordered. And we have everybody here, this time but Lou. And everybody got their agenda? And I did not, well, I didn't look, but I don't think I saw another blue sheet. So no more agenda items. So, we have a motion to adopt the agenda. A motion by Callan. A second by Heidi. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Approve and correct minutes from March 10th, 2015 regular meeting. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
A second.
A second by Cheryl. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay, we have financial reports. We have the February 2015 Treasury report.
I had a chance to go in and check the bills today. And I had a couple of items that I spoke to John about. And just wanted to reiterate that the stadium project money only go out as they come in. And right now, we have some of the FEMA monies left, so we're going to go there. So the stadium monies that go out, only go out if we have monies coming in. So that doesn't affect our budget. And we had, if you'll notice in the bills that were just given to us. Hewlett Packard was paid $61,799. Hewlett decided to go ahead and get those computers and to pay them, but it will come out of next year's budget. It's covered under question number two.
Question one, the technology levy portion of that. So, because that was tied into together.
Question one, yes.
Yeah, it was question one, but it's the technology levy that the dollars are going to come out of. And what we'll do in the future is, now, because this was the stand-out computers that we purchased. The next one is about three times that size, so we'll save for the next few years so that we don't have to lease or take on any kind of work with the next model of computers, which will be the student computers.
I'm confused on that one. So we had a budget for this year's spending?
We, no, we had a budget that, there's two things. There was, in question number one, there were two things. In the first part of it, just the referendum piece, we had some money to buy some technology, right? But that did not include replacing all the computers. The computers are on a six-year cycle.
Which their cycle is next year?
Yes. So, but we wanted to get the computers now, because it takes a while to set them up and get them going. So rather than wait till July, say, to our tech people, here are our other computers, I'll get them ready by the time school starts. It was easier for us to purchase them now. They'll come out of next year's budget when we collect the technology or the money. Because we don't collect that until next year.
So how do we float that?
We just order for a regular budget. It's, we're buying. If we wouldn't have been buying, I would have done it. So we'll just hold it once we collect the dollars, and that'll be reimbursed back into our general fund. We're good to go on this.
Okay, so, and we showed up in the financial statement like a receivable?
Yeah, we, yes.
So, the financial statement that we produced at the end of the year, does that include that?
So, it should be on next year's budget. It won't be on this year's budget.
Okay.
Purchasing now, but it's coming out of next year's budget. So that's when it'll be all paperwork.
So, if we have a general fund budget, the general fund budget is going to be less money than we port?
Yeah, well, it will all mix out in the end. I'm not even sure if we're paying the exact amount right now. I think we had to take it, because they wouldn't wait that long. So we need to take it, but again, all paperwork. All we're doing is paying out of next year's budget. We'll pay it now, it gets reimbursed, goes back in there. So it won't show up as anything when they do the audit for this year. I don't believe, I'd have to double-check with Joan, but I think.
It almost has to be three months ahead of the end of the year. So there must be kind of a book of payable or something. Anyway, just so it doesn't pass up our budget.
It will, it will not. We wouldn't have done it if it would have missed up our budget guarantee. We just wanted to make sure we got the computers now versus later.
Okay. So, first one was the February 2015 Treasury report. Any questions on those? Anything from your end on that one?
No, there's a few pieces, but nothing that is major. Nothing that I haven't talked about before on some of those pieces. You know, we're running into negatives, because we just haven't adjusted our budget. Like, what are some specific ones? Example, in period February, if you look at the first sheet, it's 72370, about 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, dump. It's negative balance right there, but that's caused because of the balance we just built from the county election. So I'm a little behind, but we'll need to readjust our budget to favor those particular things. On the second sheet, just Carl Perkins, a little more than halfway down, 52944. That's our Carl Perkins dollars. We always have, spend as much as we get in. So we don't use our general, our general end budget on that. And then on the third sheet, 53937, that's community end. Matt will readjust his budget to cover for that cost. So, they're very minor pieces in these things and all those kind of.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the Treasury report. A second by Randy. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay, then Cheryl, do you want to make a motion on the bills? Kind of explain them, or?
Yep, I make a motion that we approve the bills.
And so, we would put item number one and two together for this motion.
A second, Ed.
And we have a second by Callan. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Consent agenda, we have nothing at the moment. For business review, consider approval of the Painesville Area Schools integration plan budget for 2015-16.
You have exhibited a, or take very long. If you remember right, last year was the first year for, this year is the first year that we got integration dollars. A majority of that comes from the state, a little bit does come from the levy. There's about $31,000 that are available to us. We got the money about mid-year. We haven't used a whole lot of it. There's two pieces. If you look at this sheet, there's incentive, that's the second line down. The $10,300, those are incentive dollars. In order to spend those dollars, you have to have intradistrict things that are tied into, really for us, Melrose, which is the isolated district for diversity. So, for instance, in the summertime, we do an elementary theater camp. Every dollar that we spend out of that particular budget comes out of that $10,300. We spend it on $8,000 to $9,000 for that typically. So that one event takes care of most of that. The rest of it, and I can give the board a little reminder on the things that we're doing with that. With those dollars, we provided a speaker for our TLC program. That's our program, kind of, it's our behavioral program. We provide a speaker for that. We also provide an academic specialist to work on our most, help us, our most needy students. So we do that. We also have student peer mentors. We started that, and then we have to have a supervisor to kind of supervise the peer mentors. We started that last year. We also do a middle school summer incentive program, so they do a number of things, and we have some incentives that we're able to purchase out of this program. And then we also have a music and world language collaborative exploration. We do that at the high school. And we take some dollars out of that. And then we have the elementary collaborative program for that. These dollars come primarily from the state, but we do levy a little bit for that, that fits right into our other levies. This, for this year, we will not spend all the money that we budgeted. We got started late, it was a new program for us. So next year, we look to use most of our budget. This year, we can use most of our incentive budget, but we have used not very much of our other budget. Because it just took a long time to put things in place, the peer mentor program, for instance, although I think it'll be a great thing. Sometimes it just takes a little bit to start it up and get it going. So we hope that next year, those programs will be used a lot more than they were this year. But in order to collect those dollars, I need the board to approve that budget.
Turn to the budget.
A second. Okay, a motion by Cheryl, a second by Mark, to approve the integration plan budget. Any further discussion?
No. Any questions from my part? It really is a good deal for us.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay, then, information will be provided by ICS Consulting concerning an opportunity in Minnesota Community Solar Gardens. So, gentlemen, you are on. There's a microphone there. If you want to stay where you're at, because you've got computers, just pull that microphone over.
Well, we kind of have people listening at home. And they want to, oh, okay. Okay, well, good evening, thanks for having us. My name is Mike Piper. A partner of ICS Consulting, this is Jim Payne, who's a project manager actually assigned to Painesville Schools. I'm not familiar, should we kind of explain who we are?
You can explain. I can explain that we have, well, the consultant to work on our HVAC system. This is the same group that is doing that right now. They're putting, just as a, for my report, they're just putting together some things for HVAC, so that we can get the best bang for the buck into it, in a way that will help us move into the future.
That'd be pretty accurate. Yeah, absolutely. So our group is essentially, we're not a contractor, we don't turn wrenches or anything like that. We're consultants. Generally, in the construction management or project management oversight world, so we do a lot of work in districts around here. In the case of Painesville, we were introduced to Bob, I think, as a reference from St. Cloud, to help you with some of your control implementation as a result of a recommissioning study you guys did. So, we possess, I guess, experts, if you will, on a lot of the things, energy construction related, mechanical and HVAC controls, things like that are in our wheelhouse. And energy projects, including renewables, happen to kind of also fall in our wheelhouse. So, what's happened is a lot of school districts, our clients of ours, have contacted us saying, we're getting contacted by three, four, five vendors talking about this community solar garden program. I'm not sure if anybody's up to speed on this at all, so I will assume you are not. Essentially, there's been some changes in the Minnesota legislature that are creating a whirlwind of developers that are moving into the states that are going to be developing solar farms pretty much everywhere in Agencel territory. A lot of our clients have been getting contacted by numerous developers saying, what is this? It sounds too good to be true. What do we do? So, we happen to know a lot about it. We've worked with a lot of these different contractors and helping clients, you know, if you're going to purchase solar, if you're going to be involved in renewable energy of any type. In a lot of cases, it doesn't make financial sense, depending upon, you know, government subsidies and tax incentives, utility rebates, and what have you. So really, the starts have to align in order to make the financial sense, I guess, work, especially for our clients of the school district. We want to obviously show fiscal responsibility. So, what we were asked to do by a lot of our clients was to kind of put together a briefing, which is what this is. And then our last meeting, discussing the control stuff, we got onto this topic, and so, super-tenant, he would ask us to come and just kind of explain what this whole thing is and what it might mean to you guys. So, that's what this is. I apologize, and we probably should have brought paper copies, but it's now, knowing that you guys have to turn that away, so. But we do have a PowerPoint, so.
We'll just move around?
Yeah.
We just go up here and sit, and then we'll go down.
Sure.
Bruce, would you mind if I, just to shut that front light off, the community will be able to see it better.
It's okay, you have a little bit of a ceiling on that.
What's that?
No, it's not a camera. I have my back the other day, so it's easier to see anything.
And they'll be able to see you a lot better.
Yeah, I don't want to talk to your back to your head. Okay, so, Bob, do you want to look at the next slide? So, essentially, the community solar garden program is new. It was very end of last year, it was put into place by the Public Utilities Commission Legislature. A lot of variables go into that. There's various lobbying groups within the state wanting to see solar happen. But, you know, if you drive through parts of Minnesota, or even on, many farms up everywhere, it's kind of akin to the same thing. You're going to see solar farms going up, and of course, the question to all of us is, what does it mean to us? How does it make financial sense? So, in Agencel Energy territory, where you're an electric customer, which you are, it gives you the ability to purchase electricity that's produced by a solar farm that somebody else essentially owns, builds, and maintains. The district has no responsibility for owning the system, building it, maintaining it, none of those responsibilities. This is strictly a power purchase agreement. It's being made more complicated than that. You are being sold a bill of goods. Okay? It's really pretty simple. The power purchase agreement will generally be a period of 25 years. If you're looking at these developers and how their cash flows work, they actually have to make their money back as well. So 25 years seems to be about that, that kind of pinpoint, where everybody's going to be able to agree to a power purchase agreement of that term, and the developer will be able to make their money back. So you're not going to see anything less than 25 years from any of the developers, I don't think. Essentially, what happens is, you don't, as a district, you're not going to be required to invest anything upfront. All they're looking for is a letter of intent from various school districts to have you say, yes, we will, we are interested, we will become a subscriber to a solar farm that developer A is going to build. And again, that's where the, that's where the interesting part is. There's, literally, I think we're up to 27 different developers and contractors we've run into that are trying to build these things in the state right now. It's kind of crazy. But essentially, what happens is, you're going to sign a power purchase agreement if you partake in this program. You'll sign a power purchase agreement with that third-party developer. And there's a few different rate structures, we'll get into that in a little bit. But the rate structures are such that they're always going to be less than the amount you're getting credited by Agencel Energy. So, you're only paying, you're a subscriber, so you don't own or operate the system, you have no responsibilities there. You are a subscriber, and your subscription amount is determined by how much electricity you guys consume right now, as a, as a user of Agencel Energy electricity. Okay? Bottom line, the amount that's going to be credited back to the district is more always than is what you're going to be paying to the third party for the power purchase agreement, for the power that's produced. If there's no power produced, you don't pay anything. If the power is produced more than anticipated, you're going to pay more, but you're going to save more. It's a paper, it's not even really a game. It's black and white. This is not a similar play of like an energy efficiency savings, meaning like if you're going to change a boiler in your building, well, you know, you're going from 80 to 95% efficiency. You think you're going to save that money, but you really don't know. This is not that. This is strictly, you're being credited 11 plus cents from Agencel Energy, and you're paying nine plus cents to the developer. That's exactly what it is for the exact same amount of power. The subscription amount, the reason that this has become such a big deal, and because it's so lucrative, is because it's not limited to just a 40-kilowatt system, which a lot of districts, I don't know if you guys are familiar with that, there's a lot of districts that have put those on their roofs as a result of another Agencel Energy program with rebates. Essentially, it's a no out-of-pocket thing where they've been able to put systems on their roof. 40-kilowatt system is great if you have a way to pay for it, and it makes fiscal sense. But essentially, 40 kilowatts, you're running, you know, 10 microwaves on it, it's not like it's really contributing that much to your building. It's more of a statement of learning, how can you incorporate that into your curriculum and show that you are environmental stewards. 120% of your entire electrical consumption is quite a different story. You guys use, we don't have the actual data from Agencel yet, they've been, I think I'm getting into it, because we get it for the other work that we're doing for you. But our anticipation is that you spend a little over, you spend a little over $100,000 a year in energy costs as a school district. A good portion of that is electric costs. Based on normal rates, we can assume that you guys are about a megawatt or a megawatt-plus user every year, meaning you use about a million kilowatt-hours of electricity from Agencel Energy. Your subscription size for purchasing electricity from the solar gardens is limited to 120% of all of your electrical costs. So, if you're using a megawatt, you're paying $100,000 bucks a year. Essentially, we're going to be able to reap savings on 120% of that, meaning 1.2 megawatts. And we'll get into some calculations here, if that makes sense. Bottom line, if we're doing it right, we've heard a lot of different stories, and there's a lot of developers out there, and some have been saying, hey, we need money, we want you to invest. That's not the case. It might be with some developers, but if we're doing it the right way, in our opinion, as your advisor, there are a few developers that we would go with. And there's, actually, it's a little trickier than I think a lot of these developers think. So, no out-of-pocket costs, and all maintenance operation costs are going to be taken care of by the developer. Okay, so, what we found, actually not, well, kind of found and also requested of developers, is that there's really three different opportunities or three different options for the power purchase agreement. So again, you're going to be buying, you would be signing a 25-year commitment to buy power, and you'd be, essentially, you're hedging at your electrical rates, is what you are. Under, there's three different structures that we've found. So there's an escalating structure, which means your power purchase agreement rate is going to increase, and that will go along with the amount of credit that you get back from Agencel. So, Agencel is always going to credit your bill, and that credit that Agencel gives you is based upon the cost of their generation of electricity, which has not gone down in decades. I don't know if it ever has, but if we look at the last decade or so, it's increased every year by about 3%. The normal seems to be that Agencel requests about 14% from the Public Utilities Commission, and they come back and say, well, about 3% is all that you have. That is generally the case. The escalating rate, essentially, you're always going to have, if you can picture my hand here, your credit rate is always going to be here, and your power purchase rate is always going to start a little bit lower, so there's going to be a net savings from day one. In the escalating situation, your power purchase agreement is going to go up at a rate of, I think the lowest we've got right now, 1.99%. The credit rate from Agencel is anticipated to be 2 and a half to 3%, meaning the credit rate that you're going to get back is going to increase faster than the rate you're going to get on the escalating, escalating power purchase agreement. Okay? We're not recommending that. If you want, you'll get more money, more savings in earlier years, but over the term of the 25 years, because of that increasing power purchase agreement rate, you'll save less. And so, really, we do have a couple of districts that are really low on funds and have a big energy usage that might need money in the near future. That would be the only situation in which we're recommending escalating. Fixed rate is pretty much what we're recommending everywhere. This seems to be the best, this is up to you guys to determine, but this seems to be the best mix of risk versus reward. Fixed rate essentially says, okay, the Agencel credit rate is still up here, and your power purchase rate is a little bit higher than the escalating rate in the earlier years, because the developer's going to want to recoup their costs. But that power purchase agreement stays flat for the entire term of the 25 years. So if, and I believe the rate we're at right now is 10.99 cents per kilowatt hour. So essentially, the power purchase agreement, you would be paying 10.99 cents per kilowatt hour for all the power that's produced on the system for about a megawatt, which is, or for about a megawatt, meaning the amount of power that you would have. And the credit rate from Agencel right now, and this is set in stone, is more than 11.5 cents right now. And that is projected again to continue to go up. So as the Agencel credit rate that you're getting back from Agencel goes up over time, your power purchase agreement rate stays flat, and you're going to be getting more and more savings. And so we have some of that graphically demonstrated.
When you say that's set in stone, is that set in stone for 25 years?
No, that's not set in stone. It's for right now, for the beginning piece of it. So, the calculation is a little complicated, but it's their cost of generating electricity plus two cents, is all it is. And so right now, they're at about 9 point, or about 9.898 cents, and that was kind of their last provision. Plus two cents is the amount of the credit that Agencel is mandated to provide you under this program. So it is, when I say set in stone, it's not like it can just change tomorrow and become five cents. Then obviously.
But can it change five years down the road?
If it changes five years down the road, and that's why we have the last, the last option here on the readjustation. Which I recommend, because electricity is, if you look at, there's some districts that hedge on like their natural gas purchasing, meaning you might take 50% in natural gas and lock in a price with a third-party marketer, because in Minnesota, we have deregulated gas markets, but in, we don't have that for electricity. So you have to buy electricity from Agencel Energy. Natural gas and propane have historically gone up and down quite a bit. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with that, but natural gas does tend to fluctuate quite a bit. Electricity, not so much. It's been pretty much on a steady increase, a slow increase for a long amount of time. If we want to look at another option, there's something that's called an index rate. This is not offered by every developer that's out there. We do know of a few that will offer this. Your savings go down substantially, but essentially, in that solution, what it says is, your power per, again, your credit rate from Agencel, meaning what you're going to get back from them, is set here. Your power, your power purchase rate is going to be always two cents less, or 2% less. Meaning, if it goes up, you're going to, you're going to go up, but if it goes down, you're going to go down. But your savings is never going to change, but your savings amount over 25-year period is going to be significantly less, almost to the point where we would recommend it's not even worth the administrative costs of doing it. So, and we can show you that graphically as well. But there is a way to give yourself 100% protection. We believe that this is, the fixed is close to that, and the escalating is also a pretty good bet, but we think that long-term cash flow, you're going to be better off if you get a fixed rate structure. Index would protect you from that drop that you're talking about. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, a couple of just cash flow examples here. And I, I'm not sure I like how we did this, to be honest with you. So just ignore the green line, if you will. The green line is just the annual savings that we're looking at, as I mentioned earlier. So this is a fixed PPA structure. Again, the blue is going to be the credit rate you get from Agencel. Is that, oh, is that smart work? Can I edit this?
Yeah.
So, your bill savings, again, is the blue, that's going to be the credit you get back from Agencel. The red is going to be the amount that you're paying to the third-party developer that owns and manages the solar farm. So again, this is always going to be less than your bill savings, as we set it up correctly, which we will. The green is just simply the difference between these two and how it goes up over time. So this is a fixed PPA structure, assuming that it goes up by 2.75% every year, and that's where I talk about how electric rates from Agencel have gone up 3% or a little bit better than that. Over the last 10 years, we did an analysis, just to kind of have an understanding of where that's at. Agencel has never come back to the Public Utilities Commission, at least in my lifetime, asking for a decrease. And so they've always gotten some element of an increase, and with the, well, obviously Insurco and the nuclear plants that we do have, I just, I'm not an expert, nor do I work on the Public Utilities Commission, but I don't see electric rates going down anytime soon. With natural gas, I would absolutely say there's a possibility of that, just because we're tapping into new, you know, ways to obtain that type of energy. But electricity, it's just not going to happen so quickly. So this is a fixed structure, and again, you can see over time, your savings is going to start to increase, because this rate is going to go up. And, you know, we're assuming 2.75% here. It could be 5%, it could be 1%. You can look at what the difference is going to be, but the main thing here is that your rate would always stay the same. And you might ask, why is this red line going down a little bit? And the reason the red line's going down a little bit is because a solar garden, any type of solar panel, has degradation over time. It's not going to produce the same amount of power that it produces the day that it's installed. And a normally accepted measure for that is about a 0.5% degradation factor per year in power output. So, as power output goes down, you pay less. That's all it really is. I'll be good next time, Bob. Or do you want me to do it? So this is just a cumulative cash flow. I'm not sure if this could ever work or not. So, same thing, instead of just showing annual cash flow, this just shows cumulative cash flow, cumulative savings over time, and this is, we, I need this updated for you guys. So about a 6 million kilowatt user, I think this is probably Redland Schools. They're going to save over the period of 28 years, assuming this 2.75% annual electric cost increase, about $8 million. So if you take yourselves at about one-fifth of that, we're going to be, we'll be a million[1656.62] plus even. And we can, we have some sample cash flows that we can show you. The next one, I think, is the escalating PPA structure. So this is the escalating PPA structure where I mentioned, your bill savings, again, are always going to be greater than your actual payments. And in this case, the gap is a little bit wider in the earlier years because they're willing to give you a lower rate when you first start. But the difference is this amount is going to go up over time and the rate that this goes up over time is a negotiated thing. The best rate we've gotten is 1.99 percent increase. And again, we're assuming this goes up at 2.75 percent. So if the Excel credit rate were to go up at 1.99 percent, these would be in tandem with one another and that would be basically the same savings year on year. I think that it's easy to argue that this blue line will actually go up at a sharper rate, therefore the savings would be more, but I don't know why we would, I don't know why school districts would consider paying an escalating rate, but we could just lock it in and be done with it and actually save more. So the next one should be cumulative savings of that. Again, this is really going to affect you, but you'll notice on the last slide, it was about 8 million in savings in this situation. This one's only about 6. So over a 25-year period, it does make no very significant difference. Okay, so the important piece, you have the next slide. Everybody says we would work with, you know, why do we work with them? And to your point earlier, everybody says, well, we're the biggest covenant in town, we're the biggest solar contractor, we've got the most money to build the farms, we've got the most positions. All these variables have to come into play so that these solar farms can actually be built and be approved by Excel. There's a lot of rules and barriers to entry that, in my opinion, people do not understand because a lot of these guys are coming from out of town. Number one, understanding, understanding those barriers are key. So every solar farm that's built, they have to be built in megawatt chunks, okay? So you have to have 1 megawatt, 2 megawatt, 3 megawatt, 10 megawatt, whatever it might be. They're intended to be community solar gardens, so they won't, they certainly, Excel does not want these to be corporate solar gardens, if you will. They don't want to just have three major players working or working and buying all this money in the solar garden. So they want to have kind of distributed, I guess, pieces, if you will. They have to find land, and in a lot of cases, school districts are also having the option to also lease their land to a solar developer. That might be a piece of land that you have that you don't build a building on and that going rate for that's 800 to 1,000 bucks a year per acre. But we've got to have enough land, it's sufficient to meet the subscribers' needs. Case in point, at St. Cloud Schools, they're a 28-megawatt user. It's massive. And so for, to have enough land to be able to support that, we can't just put that all in one piece of land. They're going to have to be spread out all over the place. And so that's actually a good thing, especially being in this area, because there are numerous school districts that are all working with us to try and figure out how we're going to put this together. Because you have to have five subscribers on every farm. You can't just be one subscriber. That's the piece that I think everybody misses. You've got these developers running around, meeting with solar contractors. Hope they're not watching TV right now. But what's happening is they're meeting and they'll sign up a school district and they might be, you know, on the east side of the state and, you know, down in Red Wing or something. Then you might have another one that's out here in west central Minnesota who will sign up a school district and say, great, we got a letter of intent, they're ready to go with us, and they don't have four other subscribers, and all of a sudden, it all falls apart. Because if you don't have a minimum of five subscribers, Excel is never going to approve it. That's in the rules. So it's very key to have a coordinated effort by you guys, other school districts, community members, whatever it may be, in order to make this happen. Yes, it is true that if you want to have a company that has enough capital to build and maintain the farm, not to mention, they also have to have a $100,000 fee for every megawatt that they're subscribing to. Meaning if we're going to build a 10-watt megawatt farm, we better have a $1 million down payment that goes to Excel. So that's mostly what they're talking about, Bob, when he talked about, you know, hey, we're the biggest deal in town. That's fine, you know, that's great. But what we want to do is make sure that we're working with somebody that's going to have a coordinated effort to be able to get all the subscribers, and otherwise it's a house of cards, it's going to fall apart. Last thing to mention, subscribers may have the opportunity to lease land. I don't know if we've talked about that here, but if you have a plot of land that you know we're never going to build a building on, it may be a double revenue stream where you could lease that back to the developer. A lot of school districts own a lot of land, but they simply aren't planning on using, so that's something else that's been a consideration. So anyway, choosing a partner is the absolute most difficult part, developing the contract and knowing how to do it, in my opinion. I mean, it's, it's second nature to us because we've been so involved in this over the last few months and frankly, we've talked with a lot of these guys. But this is kind of from our opinion and conversing and meeting with these people, this is what we're, what we're finding, okay? I'm not sure if we have any other ones. So, okay, so next steps. If the district is interested in pursuing this, obviously you're going to want to understand, you know, let's quantify what this potentially could mean in the way of savings for us as a school district. And I think we do have a couple of examples. I can get them on my iPad here after you guys return to your seats. But essentially, we need to look at all the amount of, the amount of money or the amount of power that's consumed as a school district with Excel Energy, the amount of electric power. Times that times 120 percent, that's your maximum subscription rate. We can back that into the escalating scenario, the fixed scenario, the index rate scenario and show you what those cash flow documents or those cash flow scenarios really look like. So we want to quantify the savings and determine which structure makes the most sense for you. And I have a hunch that you will all agree that the fixed structure would make the most sense as a district, but that's up to you. Whether or not you want to go through an RFP process and interview providers is up to you. Some school districts just sign with somebody they're comfortable with. Some districts want to go through an RFP and see what a few different contractors have to offer. Doesn't matter, we can help facilitate that any way that you would like. But then, what we always do as consultants, and which is the reason that we like this program, is you're going to save a bunch of money. And I don't know any district that doesn't need to save money. If we can save that money and it's hard savings, it's black and white budget savings, meaning it's not some long-term cost avoidance or anything like that, if these are hard savings that you guys are going to save on a annual basis, well, we should take that money and integrate it into your overall master use plan and how you're going to be addressing facility needs over the next 10 or 12 years. I like to do that because I'm a project manager that runs a project management company. So of course, we want, we want to show you how to utilize this money, but the reality is, it's how to do more with less. We like the program because it can save you dollars and it can mean a lot for you in the long term. So that's pretty much the overview on the program. I don't think we have any other slides. I don't know if you want me to answer questions from down here or go back up there. I'm happy to do, whatever.
I think one question, so the developer, the one that actually builds and makes their money, you?
You, maybe you basically look at their, their cash flow, but essentially, there's a couple of things. So private developer that builds a solar farm, up until the end of 2016, there's a 30 percent, that's a tax credit for renewable energy projects that are put in place. So right off the bat, they're going to get a 30 percent tax credit on the cost of the project. And if you start to look at the structure of how they're getting money from all their power purchase agreement subscribers, over the course of time, they're making their money back at a faster rate than what they're paying interest on developing the farm. So essentially, they're going to be making cash flow from, from day one, the developers are, because they have access to cheap money. That's all it really is. And I, we can get into the details on, but as far as spouting numbers off the top of my head, I wouldn't be able to do that without sitting down and literally mapping it out for you.
So the savings we would have is black and white for 25 years?
Yeah. Yeah. It's, your credit rate is this and your-
And then the credit is coming back from Excel. Is that directed by the government?
The, yeah, so the legislature mandates, legislature mandates what the Public Utilities Commission has to do. Public Utilities Commission tells Excel what they have to do.
So if Excel sells out?
If Excel sells out, I, I don't have a critical. So, well-
Well, we don't then run a grant.
Yep.
And they used to be NSB. And if it's driven by the government, what kind of strings are tied to us for the 25 years to give something to place like that?
The power purchase agreement is the only document that you guys are going to sign, and frankly, we have, we are waiting to get-
So there's no dark side to that?
I, not that we can see, okay? Not, not that we can see right now. Now granted, right now, what they're asking you to do is sign a letter of intent to, so that they can go and build their farm, basically the conceptual farm, say, here's the players that are going to be involved, Excel, here's the money for the application, you get a rubber stamp and now let us go build our farm. At that point is when we'll have the power purchase agreements in place. Our job is to review those and make sure that there aren't any of those gashes. We haven't encountered any of those on the other solar programs that we've seen. Granted, if, yeah, I have some, if the government were to come in and say, hey, we're not going to do this anymore, nor are we going to allow the, you know, utility to fund it anymore, I, I don't know. I mean, I can't predict that, but I suppose it's a possibility. I mean, it's a good question, but we don't know the answer to that question.
No, it would be no big deal.
There are still other state power companies. I mean, they still operate at the state power, just a little different name, so.
When you're talking about subscribers, you're talking school districts strictly or you're talking mall?
It can be commercial and residential, so it really depends on who these guys get to sign up. The reason they like school districts is, number one, it's easy to say it's community-based because it's a school district, public school district. Number two, you have a lot of square footage and therefore use a lot of electricity, therefore you're a larger user, they can get a larger dollar amount installed. And frankly, if I'm a developer as well, I'm not going to want to have 1,000 different residents as a part of the solar, the administrative cost on having 1,000 power purchase agreements versus, you know, 10. Absolutely. Yeah, and so they're, you know, manufacturing, private industry, all opportunities. So, you know, we work with Hazleton and the Minnesota Twins and Boston Scientific, we're talking to, I mean, just, they're clients of ours that understand what is this, because they're all big approach people. Those are all people that could participate in this program.
When you're talking community, how far around are we actually talking?
As long as you're in Excel territory, you can participate in the program. The solar farm that you have to be a part of, meaning they have to be a subscriber, has to be in your county or a neighboring county. So to be honest with you, we're kind of finding the sweet spot right now to be Wright County because, and I'll, I'll tell you, we have, let's see here, Jim might tell me which districts we have in this area, but again, this is akin to, everybody else has asked us the same question, so there's a group of districts that we're trying to have placed on specific farms right now, and they're all getting on board with one specific developer right now. Those are Rockford, Mannandale, Becker, St. Cloud, and Holdingford. I'm not sure if there's any others. You know, maybe you guys, but there's, there's kind of a strategic grouping here that if we can make that happen, to give you guys the best chance of success in order for this thing to not fall apart, that's, that's what we're here to try and make sure happens. And then in this area, that's, and it won't be all school districts either. They're going to, they'll have, what we're going to do, and you know, granted, this is kind of on the front end, everybody's getting their letter of intent, it's all taken care of, and so we're trying to make sure that we're, A, negotiating the right fee structure right now, kind of doing a comparison to make sure that we're getting, you know, the best deal essentially. Number two, we're making sure that they have the capital to be able to build the farms, but number three, they, like I said, the most important piece is, okay, if all you school districts over here are going to sign up, well, we better darn well make sure that we've, you know, got enough players that can be a part of this, go to five, you know, five-position subscribers so that we can actually build the farm and Excel will accept it. How those are all being laid out right now is kind of a question because everybody's maybe three weeks ahead maximum of you guys, maybe they're all getting letter of intent proposals right now. So how that's all going to be played out is going to happen over the next, I'd say, month.
How many subscribers do you have that is in Hazel District area, your, your area that you have come out? Would we be the first one in that area?
Um, I, I will, I don't know, it depends. In your region, I can position you guys with all those other districts I just mentioned. I haven't talked to BBE, either BBE is a client of ours, we ran the project on a couple of years ago, so I think we'll, I'm sure that we'll end up talking to them about it. I know they've been approached about it, we got a phone call, but we haven't met with them yet. But no, like Eaton Valley Lockins, I haven't talked to any of them. I would actually, I would, I would advise you guys to do that if you are interested and or want to give them the opportunity. It's not a race to the finish line to get something before somebody else, it's actually that we almost need to collaborate on this and work on it together in order to make it happen. So I would advise you to talk to those folks if, if that's something you want to do. I don't think it's necessary because I mentioned all those other districts that are already involved in this, so that's really up to you guys.
Isn't finding land a key to it though?
Yeah, it sure is. And there's, and that's one thing that we ask when we talk to these folks. I mean, I can't tell you how many lunch requests we've had to, you know, sit down and discuss this with all these different developers. And then we've taken a few of them, just to get an idea. Some of them have land positions, some of them say they do. Some of them don't have any idea. So we, we know, we know that once they do. And so it's a matter of kind of narrowing down the field and working with the right guys, if you ask me.
You'd also have to be located, I would think, close enough to the power.
Good point. That's absolutely right. Absolutely right.
I mean, sometimes they're hooking up this power and there's no transmission lines.
Absolutely right. And so, and I, I will, I will tell you, I guess I don't know if I would allow it to. There are a couple of districts that are working on this, actually have land that are very close to being able to be great connected. And, you know, they're in packages of, I think, anywhere from 20 to 140 acres, and both of those are being looked at. And we don't have lease agreements in hand, we do have templates, but we've been assured that the going rate for leasing that land for a 25-year period will be anywhere from 800 to 1,000 bucks per year for 25 years. And that could be from a school district, could be from a private entity, could be from a farm owner, it really just depends. So it's quite an interesting program.
But if they find land, nothing makes any difference to us other than the savings.
Correct.
And if there's no dark side, when we sign the letter of intent, that means, see, the letter of intent is fascinating to me. Yes, you can deal with the letter of intent, but usually there's strings, some strings attached somehow.
And we've, you know, obviously been looking for them and I, I don't, I don't see any, so I don't know if, just, it's akin to the situation where I don't, I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with the Maiden Minnesota Solar Program, but essentially there was a bunch of districts in Excel territory, again, that were being approached by solar contractors, solar photovoltaic contractors, meaning panels that actually generate electricity, not just heat water, but actually generate electricity. There was an incentive program, and it still actually exists right now. But we've, as, you know, owners reps and what we do for school districts, we've been asked by dozens of school districts, hey, you know, does it make sense for us to do wind turbine or do solar? You know, we'd love, we'd love to do something like that, and we've never been able to honestly say it makes sense to do it fiscally because it never made any financial sense. You know, there's, the paybacks are simply not there. Well, what happened a couple of years ago with the Maiden Minnesota program was essentially Excel Energy and the rebate program was covering 60 percent of the installed cost of the system. We're talking about quarter million dollar systems here. So 60 percent was covered essentially by utility rebate. Bring in a third, a third-party private developer who gets that 30 percent investment tax credit, I mentioned to you, 90 percent of the system cost is covered. The remaining 10 percent was being made up via a power purchase agreement, not by cash out of the district's pocket. So very similar type situation, but my point is they had, we had letters of intent at that point too, to, in order for the developer or the contractor to go and actually apply with Excel, because they want to make sure that you've got some skin in the game to say, look, if we're going to plop down $100,000 on your behalf as a megawatt subscriber, we want to make sure that we've got something in the works. And I will tell you that BBE did that, that rooftop program that we're just talking about, and they backed up. And they signed a letter of intent, they backed up. And so I think you can.
I don't know that so much backing up, but it's, it's like if somebody's renting 140 acres of land and you have it all sealed up, and if the thing goes belly up, somebody wants to get paid from somewhere. It would seem like the letter of intent would have ties, but they have no ties to it. Really, our only consideration would be if we want to save money.
Right, and I would advise you, you know, as a board, you know, we'll get, we can get a land, a letter of intent drafted for you guys from any one of these developers, no problem. I mean, they'll do it in a day because they, all they need is usage information and contact information. I mean, it's literally that simple. I hate to describe it that way, but it's, what's your usage, your, your subscription amount? Here's the cap, here's the calculation for the fixed rate, the escalating rate, the index rate. Which one do you guys like more? You can have that letter of intent, which is what you guys would approve, I'm assuming as a board, and you guys can have that to review for your next board meeting. I mean, that's something that's very easily done. My question to you was, do you want to either do that or do you actually want to solicit, you know, competitive bids from all these different providers? Which you can, but I'm telling you right now, the lowest rating that we've seen has come from, well, really two providers. And actually, one of them beats the other guy out by a tenth of a penny, so there you go.
And you'll probably talk to town superintendents about this deal?
Yeah, I, yeah, and there's certainly interest out there. You know, I've got another meeting coming up Friday, that I'll, I'll do some more talking with some superintendents about it. I'm getting calls all the time over us. One started it, that, you know, I think you might have sat there with me a little bit when we talked about it, now it's just has, started to bloom. Every person I've contacted or has contacted me has said, we're the best, don't go with anybody else. You know, so, you know, I, I think we just need to sit down. And I probably would recommend to the board that I put together a couple of board members. We have sat, have a discussion. And we just make a recommendation from there to the majority of the board on where we think we need to go. If we want to have some people come in, we sort of can have that happen, you know? But it's kind of up to the board on where they want to go. When I talked with, with Mike about this, I just didn't want to be sitting still on this one. And, you know, in the end, he could decide, oh, this isn't what we want to do. But I didn't want to be in a position where we hadn't discussed it, everybody else does it. It's the best thing, it's a slice of bread, and we're not doing it. So that's why this presentation today to bring them forward, so that I bring the whole board on, or the whole board onboard as far as that this opportunity is there. You know, and like I said, on Friday, I'll be talking with more, more, more superintendents about this, on where they're at with it, some that have experience with this. But I've been pretty busy, I haven't gotten to another meetings. I need to get to talk to superintendents, so I haven't had much of a chance to talk to them. I've talked with a few. Most of them are moving with this stretch.
So basically, you're saying there's no risk to the school?
No, and, or, no, I don't, not that we concede, especially with signing the letters of intent. Now, I mean, we've got, you know, several of our clients that have already entered into these. We're, we're here, I mean, our role as your advisor is to protect you guys, it really is. And so I, yeah, I have no issues about recommending that you move forward with this program and figure out who you want to do it with. I mean, especially at this stage right now, it's a matter of just making sure that you partner with the right guys that are going to get the farm put together to give you the best chances of success. And, you know, this thing could still, you know, fall apart if, you know, Excel, Excel could turn the tap off at any time because they have to meet, they're trying to meet a certain amount of megawatt usage that's signed up for this program because they're being mandated by the state to have one and a half percent of their electrical usage, um, excuse me, electrical generation come from solar by '25. So they're under the gun right now. But as you're indicating with all of these people out there, I don't suspect, I think there's a lot of people talking big that they have a lot of stuff signed up and going, but with the money and trying to get subscribers lined up, I, I just, I'm, I kind of hesitate to believe that that's really true, but it is going to happen at some point. And so I, I would advise you that if you are interested in doing this, you don't want, you don't want to wait too long.
Mike, I would put you on the spot a little bit. Why, why wouldn't we just go to one of the developers and not have you in the middle there?
Go ahead.
No, I'm just, because the question has to, because I had put you on the spot a little bit here. You've got to make money someplace too. You're not going to just advise everybody and not make money. So the question comes is, what's your?
Well, there's two answers to your question, because it's funny that you ask, because every contractor that meets with us says, hey, can we take you guys a commission? Like, no, that's not what we're about. If we're involved in helping you guys facilitate contracts and, you know, manage any portion of this from your side, can we make something from it? I, I would like to, but I'm not going to request that right now. My more, our company is more interested in helping you guys with projects, which goes back to my last point of, I want to help you figure out how to utilize those savings. There's a lot of things that you guys need to address in these district buildings. And there's a lot of things that you guys need to, I guess, take a step back and figure out a way to prioritize and address. But you're going with your referendum, that's what we're here to help with. And if this is a means to help that effort, that's all we're here for. So I would advise you on the solar, around this community solar garden thing, use our expertise. I mean, we're, we're here to help you. I mean, we're, we're your eyes and ears on this thing. So that's finally.
Yeah, I just know that because of other things that have happened in the past, that question will come up.
I'm sure.
Well, what part is it in for you? Everybody, everybody's going to look for that dirt closet.
No, definitely, like, we're for you on the recommission, the implementing of recommissioning stuff. We're going to come back to you and we're going to tell you, here's how the things that you guys need to do and how you need to implement them. But, you know, our, our, you have a contract with us, it's a fixed fee kind of deal, that's how we operate. And you're, you're going to like some of the stuff we tell you, you're going to not like some of the stuff we tell you. So it's just, but, I mean, we're here to, you know, help you and protect you because we're building experts. We know this industry, that's what we, that's what we do. If there's a way that we can collect money on a solar garden, then for sure, I'll do it, but I won't tell you about it. But right now, I mean, I don't know, I just want you to get the deal in place so you can get the savings. So we're, we're on the sex front end of all this stuff right now, but it's, it's a crazy world, this whole solar thing is. And it's Minnesota owning, it's amazing. I'm trying to figure out what state it owns in.
So from your perspective, you're not tied in any of these people are building it right now, so really?
We've got, we've got, we've got a couple that we would prefer, only because we've worked with them. For example, actually, the one, I don't know who owns it, but you guys, there's someone in town who has a pretty large solar array on, I think it's manufacturing facility, isn't it? The contractor that did that is actually one of the preferred contractors that we work with. They did all of our other school projects and the last go-around on those rooftop mounted systems, and we just trust them. They do a job.
But you have no tie-ins to their solar, that by going with one contractor or another, there's no financial incentive from them that does that? And you had told me that, I just wanted to make sure that we're, there's.
No, and if that, and if that happens, if we can figure out a way to collect money on this, I'll, I'll, you know? I would love to, I mean, we're a for-profit company, but, um, yeah, I mean, it's not a, no, we're not here to.
Is that the same company that Holden Ford is going with?
They're the same ones that Holden Ford did, yep. And, you know, oh yeah, you know, of course.
I do have, do you want some numbers really quick, just some, some, assuming savings numbers?
Certainly the board would be interested in that.
And I can, and we'll share this with Bob so he can forward it out to you guys. But, um, right now, using the same numbers that we talked about, um, and again, we don't have validated electric consumption data, but assuming that you, you guys as a district consume 1 million kilowatt hours per year, which is a 1 megawatt, um, usage. That means your subscription size will be 1.2 million, excuse me, 1.2 megawatts maximum subscription size. Um, assuming that we used on the fixed rate, meaning everything stays fixed for 25 years, your annual savings in the first year, based on those numbers, would be a little shy of $11,000. And by the year, by year 10, it would be almost 50,000 annually. And then by your 25-year cumulative total would be north of 1.6 million in savings. That, that's over 25 years again. And this doesn't take into account inflation, the cost of money. So, uh, you know, if electricity, if electricity rates go up, that number will go up, but, you know, then again, cost of everything else will go too. Which is why we would again recommend the fixed rate. On the escalating rate, um, annual savings in the first year with the same numbers would be about 24,000, so a little bit better in the early years. In year 10, uh, about 40,000. And then by the end of year 25, cumulative total would be about 1.1 million. So there's a half million dollar difference there, just based on that scenario, which is again, fixed rate is what you need to do. And your index rate, I don't have that in this spreadsheet here, but I, it would be a fraction of that.
And I'm assuming some of these bigger districts that are on there looking at going into this, that almost helps us?
Oh, yeah.
Because they're going to need more players to jump in with them.
That's exactly what I'm.
If they need five farms themselves, they're going to need those additional players for each of those five farms.
Precisely. Which is why getting this thing organized is so, it's critical. If you're going to do this, you know, just make sure you're doing it the right way. It's no different than if you're going to buy a solar system. Make sure you're doing it the right way. Don't spend money. There's people out there that will take care of this for you. Public private partnership is a good thing.
Can you see developers' farms go broke?
Yeah, absolutely, which is, which is the key consideration. If these guys go broke while they're building the farm, the house of cards, garments, and you're, you're not going to have a contract in place. Meaning, you'll basically forego any savings that you might get. There's not going to be any bonus on you to pay anything. Because again, the way that these are structured, you're only paying for the power that's produced. So if no power gets produced, you don't own it.
So what, what if they're, once they're built and they go wrong, and then they go broke? We're still paying just for that, that trouble?
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, we're not going to allow you to enter, no, recommend. We're not going to advise you to enter into a contract that has any sort, you know, pitfalls like that. And, you know, there's going to be, there's all kinds of insurance requirements for these guys. And I'm sure that, you know, if they're going to go bankrupt, they'll file bankruptcy protection and all kinds of things could happen. To play that scenario out specifically, I honestly couldn't at this point, but, you know, it's, when we go through that actual power purchase agreement contract, that's where, that's where the road makes the road. Again, I don't anticipate any issues because, well, just simply put, I don't think anybody would be going down this route if they thought that was an issue. But it is key in selecting a developer, I mean, the, the money point, you know, where the big guys in town are bigger and better than everybody else. It is a valid consideration, and that's what we're taking into account here.
There aren't any old line companies that I'm aware, most of the companies are three to five years old tops?
No, no, SunEdison, SunEdison's the big one, it's been around for a long time.
Hold on.
Uh, I don't know how old, but I know they're decades.
Because it's been going on in Colorado for some time. So.
Yep, and there's a, there, you know, and it also depends on not just the developer, but who's the contractor? You know, not only the developers are going to send their own guys in here to build the farm, they're going to use a local contractor. They're going to use a local contractor that's experienced in solar, they just got to pick a random, you know, electrical contractor. Those are all things that we, that we have a consideration, I'm making sure it doesn't.
If we design a contract to save money, I think we should look at it. If there's a dark side to it, that's what we have to, when Randy brings it up or something goes wrong, if we are committing funds to, to recover somebody's, um, error or whatever happened that they went out, that's where we would have trouble. We can't commit the taxpayers' money for that, but we could commit for the savings.
Yes, because there's no, there's no cost to the district, you won't pay a cent.
So is there a contract that goes with a letter of intent that we can look at?
We can get a sample one, I'm sure, the sample power purchase agreement, and then the letter of intent, yeah, well, I'm sorry. Yes, we'll get you a letter of intent power purchase agreement. It's just a matter, I just, my only thing is I don't want to go call up a contractor and say, hey, give us a letter of intent, unless you guys, you know, if you want to talk to a few different ones, that's fine. Do you want them to come in and present, do you want to form a committee, however you want to do that? I just, we didn't want to say, you know, let's call up the guy that, you know, we use the most and say, write a contract and we'll get it over to these guys. That's not, we don't want to go down that path here because you guys need to discuss as a board how you want to approach that. I'm happy to advise you and tell you what, what I think we should do, but it's not my call.
So what are you going to think, where should I go from here? You want to talk more?
I give you my opinion, I'd say you need two to three board members to meet with me and possibly even with Mike. And just at least hear what he has to say about his recommendation would be, um, and then we go from there. I think if we're going to go down this path, if we don't see anything, I think the next board meeting, I, because when I talk with Mike, my concern is, is that I don't, I don't want to get, be the last combust on the train and end up with other things taking place and us not being there. Meantime, I have a few people that I will call that have already been working with Mike and just see where they're at with this and to see if they see any, any bad piece to that, because that's the big question. I mean, if they go bankrupt and we don't lose anything, we don't gain anything, that's one thing, we still have a loss. We still have a possibility, it's, you know, if the moon falls, we want to be able to make sure that we're not underneath them. You know, so I guess that would be my recommendation.
So now we only need three of us?
I, I wouldn't want, I can't have any more than that, just because then you're, you've got a board meeting.
That's fine.
It's an ad hoc committee, so, um.
So I volunteer for that. Who else, Randy, Mark? Is that okay with everybody? Okay, we're, we're starting. If there could be savings towards the district, you have to have it.
Is that a reason why those people can't make the meeting, I would be an alternate?
Okay. Yeah, and certainly we'll keep the complete board involved in this. Um, we'll, we'll just have some discussions about it, and at that point, you know, we're going to come back to the board at the next meeting and say, this is what we want. There could be a letter of intent at that point, in which case we'd have more discussion, but we'll also be able to provide you more information. We do have a little bit more time now, because that next board meeting is until 14th of, of April. So it's not two weeks, it's a little longer than that right now, so.
I would recommend, if, I don't think it's absolutely imperative, like, it's not a drop dead deadline, but I do think if you can meet before then and have at least an option in front of the board at April 14th, I would advise that. Just because, I, I mean, even if it goes to May, that's fine, but if you run the risk of it slipping another month even into June, then I start feeling a little bit odd.
Yeah, what I, what I would envision is that with the three board members, they'd have a recommendation. At that point, we'd probably ask, if we're going to vote on their vote and ask, the recommendation is, we'd ask you to have a letter of intent, and they vote on that letter of intent.
Sure.
That, that meeting. Does that, now meet the timelines that you can see, Mike? Or do you think it's, you've got to?
No, I think it's fine. The only thing that would change is if we decide that we're going to put out an RFP, and the RFP basically is going to be, tell us about your company, tell us how long you've been in business and why you're financially sound, the contractors that you would use and the rates you're going to give us. I mean, it's really those things. But if you do that for a couple of weeks, that would push you to the next month, I think.
Yeah, so what we'll do is I'll set up a fairly quick meeting. I'll make sure that I don't have to do a, um, post it, I'm not sure it's an ad hoc committee, but I want to verify that. And then I think at that particular point, if that committee feels like meeting that was a special board meeting to make a decision, then we'll call a special board meeting.
I'd advise posting it, no matter what, just to make sure you're safe.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with anybody coming to that, because the more, I mean, the more is better.
And then if, whatever we can get to read, I don't know about you guys, but I'd rather be able to read something before I show up at a meeting and think, I'll look at it really rapidly, like, whatever one of these contracts looks like or.
I think what we'll do is we'll get you, even a sample, I think we can get you a sample.
We can get a sample, that'd be helpful, because that will give us an opportunity to come to a meeting productively, to ask questions, that we can.
And, and sort of one of the things I recommend, and we'll send, I'll send this to you as well, Bob, but the, the kind of most basic information that's out there regarding the program is right on Excel's website. And it's actually a very good description of the program. So I would invite you to talk about it too, just because then, then you're talking, you know, straight from the horse.
We'll do it.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, thanks.
Okay, then we're going to move to number three on business. Review and consider approval to designate the painful area school superintendent, Robert Hewitt, with authority to authorize user access to Minnesota's farm level of education, secure websites, and give the superintendent responsibility of assigning job duties to local educational or education agency staff.
Sorry. That's pretty straightforward, thank you. It's, um, they have a new system now, in the past, we're going to authorize somebody to use it. It's been a paper trail type of system. It's real pain to tell you the truth. Because somebody gets ahold of me, they tell me they want to get authorized, that it makes sense, and I have to fill out a form. Then I have to fill that form out and then email it to ME. I'm really hoping that this system is much more like Chinese, so that I can just go to the site, authorize, and be done with it. Um, so, but I, we do have to have a system, we do have to have somebody that is authorized to authorize.
I'll make a motion that we approve. Second, by Mark. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye? Aye, or say no. Okay, now we go to personnel. Review and consider approval of resignation request from Bill Lard, Special Education Paraprofessional, effective March 11th, 2015.
This is resignation.
Shall I make a motion that we approve?
Second.
Second by Cheryl. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye? Aye. Or say no. Review and consider approval of resignation request from Brenda Lyle, Secondary Administrative Assistant, effective May 8th of 2015.
Yeah, they're moving. There's all lengthy story behind it, but I would certainly recommend that we accept the resignation.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Second.
A second by Kella. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye? Aye. Or say no. Review and consider approval of resignation request from Melody Weber, Fitness Center employee, effective March 31st, March 31st, 2015.
Um, three and four are kind of tied together, the resignation for three is coming because of the hiring in the next step.
Kind of looked that way. Although, we have a motion by Mark?
Second.
A second by Lou. Any further discussion?
Um, I'm Lev Stine from both on three and four.
Okay, I think that's appropriate. So all in favor, say aye? Aye. Or say no. And one abstention, which is Shaw Velcom. Okay, then we have review and consider approval of Melody Weber, Community Education Program Coordinator, effective March 2015, 2015, for up to 20 hours per week, June through August, and 30 hours per week, September through May.
I don't know if there's any questions, but Matt is here.
Yeah, any questions? We're excited to have her join our team. She's worked, uh, for us in the Fitness Center for almost 10 years. We had very good candidates, um, apply and interview, and she's our top choice.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. And we have a motion by Lou. And we have a second by Heidi. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye? Aye. Or say no. And one abstention, which is Shaw Velcom. Okay, informational reports. Uh, WCEP Board Meeting Report, please start counting. Okay, we met, uh, March 16th, and, uh, it was rather a short meeting. We had a report from Executive Director, and she gave a report on Beacon and the ALC, update on both of those units, and, uh, she gave a report on the case load rule for special ed. And the main thing is we agreed on, or should we say, we approved the contracts. Those three contracts, two school psychologists for the West Central Ed, and we have a replacement for Dave McNaughts. They hired Kayla Meyer, she'll be working here. And, uh, they discussed the healthcare saving plan in regards to the language that was inserted into the Certified Stat Handbook and the Support Handbook. And, uh, the count now is 32 students at the ALC and 15 students at the Beacon. They have gone up from 13 at the Beacon. And that was about it. Our next meeting will be May 18th, and that'll be all the, this past meeting was in Vegas. Okay, next, um, Robert Hewitt, our Superintendent Administration Meeting Report.
Yeah, a few things, um, one is that about this time, we've always decided what we're going to do with our seniors at the end. Um, right now, we're looking at the last week is, is a week out, May 25th. Uh, we would like to end our seniors' day on that day. They would have a full day of school, they would do the rehearsal that day, that's a Monday. It gives our people a chance to get the grades in and get ready for graduation. So unless there's any kind of issues with the board, we're kind of, that's what our plan to do is. So they'd come in on May 25th, that Monday, and they would finish that Monday. Okay, then their time is done, the next Sunday they would graduate, and we'd have everything ready, um, for that graduation. So that's the first thing. Uh, calendar.
Is that Memorial Day?
Yeah.
Uh, 20, no, 25th, I think, is not.
Yeah. It's somewhere in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the 25th is Memorial Day then?
Yeah.
So we would have to bring them in on the 26th then? I completely forgot, that's right. Laurie and I were looking at it today and we're thinking on that Tuesday. Um, the question would be, and I, I think I'll have a discussion just to inform you. The reason we didn't go on Tuesday is originally we talked about bringing them in on Tuesday just for the rehearsal. That's a good and bad thing, because people may not come in for the whole, for the rehearsal that day. So if it's okay with the board, just be aware of that. I think one or two things will happen. Either we'll just bring them in for rehearsal on that Tuesday and then release them, or we'll have school probably the whole day that day with rehearsal included. I'll talk to Laurie, if the board is just aware of it, that the only reason we were looking at Monday is because we were a little concerned about that. Even one of us got that it was Memorial Weekend or that Monday. So if it's okay with the board, that's kind of what our direction will be. It'll be one of those two things for Tuesday, and maybe Laurie needs to have some discussion with the seniors to make sure that things will work out the way we want them to, if they do it one way or the other. So, any issues with the board, if we go down that path? Okay, um, calendar continues to be adventurous a little bit. I do have those two calendars, I sent it out to the board. Um, if we do the after Labor Day start, our calendar is very simple. We, I think it's a good calendar, I think we have everything in there. I bring it to the board, we would graduate, uh, school would be done on June 2nd, and we'd graduate on June 5th. Okay, I think that's a pretty clear-cut one. If we can't, um, start early, then that's one certainly we would vote. Right now, um, in the Senate omnibus bill, there is that they can start on September 1st. That's in the bill, whether that will pass or not. I, I keep going back and forth on whether I should. I, I keep going back and forth on whether I should jump through all the hoops to try to get us to start early anyway. I keep hoping that some of the, the schools, the other schools will find out whether theirs was approved. That would give you an indication on whether ours would be approved. Um, I'm going to try to get more of an answer this week, hopefully maybe from even M D E, to see what their feeling is going to be, if they are actually going to approve any of those or not. I would certainly like to start school early, without a doubt. I think that'd be better for us. Uh, the second calendar that I sent you started on August 31st, I think. So if I want to try to catch it right, then I would start on September 1st. We go three days. Would be four days, but it'd be three days. It would still allow us to end early. So, um, I'm relooking at that again now. My concern about coming to the board with two calendars is just causing confusion with parents. So I'm really torn between whether it's a good idea to come to the board with two calendars, one in case, or just do the one calendar, and then if we're given the option, come back to the board and say we're going to change the calendar now that we've gotten the legal permission to do that. So any input that the board has on that one, I would love to hear. If we start early, the one downside that we have that I can see, because everything else will match up and we would just finish the school year early. But if we go to the second calendar, part of the problem is, is that you would end, um, up on, oh, probably instead of June, you'd end up at May 26th probably, or the 25th, or 26th or 27th probably. The trouble is then that is Memorial Weekend. So you have kind of three options. You could do it over Memorial Weekend. Um, there are some districts that do have graduation over Memorial Weekend. I think we might have as many complaints one way or the other. Some might like it, but some are going to hate it. We could do it after Memorial Weekend, but then that's a week past school hitting out, so that's kind of getting too far down the other road. Or one suggestion would be to just end them a week early, which would be like on the 22nd of, of May.
Is it more important to start them early?
You've got to get one of those.
Is it more important to start them early than end them a little later?
Well.
Because sometimes if you, if you, first off, everybody's got graduations all over the place for most of the first part. For the business, there are a lot of businesses that are not really wanting to start early, um, because of the, the later date. But now if we're letting them out early, are we doing the same?
Remember now, you're only letting the seniors out early. You know, for, because they would graduate early. The rest of the kids would go into May 27th, 26th, 27th. The thing that you gain is that you gain more days before you give the state tests. That's the real big advantage to starting them early. You know, and you can have hot days in, in August and September. You can have hot days in June. Um, I can tell you that the closer you get to June, the more antsy everybody gets about ending. So they're not as effective days. That's why I don't like to make up snow days in June. You just don't typically get the best bang for the buck. So by far, if we're given the option to start early, I'm going to recommend to the board that we start early. It just, to me, gives us a good calendar. It gives us our kids starting right away in September. I'm hoping that the state legislature will allow us to do that regardless. So I do think there's a benefit to it. The only downside that I'm seeing is that when do we have graduation? Because you graduate the kids either before, during Memorial Weekend, or a week after that.
How do, um, what do the ending dates of area schools look like? I mean, does everyone want to try to get it done before June, or are they?
They vary because of their contracts. St. Cloud goes well into June. Well, they go well into June because they, uh, weeks bring great. You know, Sartell has the same thing. Every, every district is different on how they do things. There's no one district alike in regards to that. You know, I want as many days before we give state tests as we can possibly get. That's kind of where I lie with that. So just be aware, right now legally, we only have one calendar to look at. And that would be an after Labor Day start. So that's where we're at right now. If we're given permission, then from my point of view, I'm certainly going to ask that we start early. Because again, we get more days in. But if we do that, then we've got to answer that question about when graduation's going to be. The one school that I saw doesn't, they like having graduation in over Memorial Weekend. Um, I don't, I have no idea where parents would fall.
Well, could you still extend it to having it, classes going into May? Even if you start earlier, you could have days out, more days off during the school year then.
Well, yes, we could do that. You can have more days off during the school year. My guess again is that both the students and the teachers would much rather, because for the same reason though.
Right, but still at the end of the day, if we're going like this year, we're going till, you know, the end of May, so what would be the difference if we would still go to the end of May even if starting at the, early, yeah?
Well, and if you start going into the next week after Memorial Weekend.
Yeah.
Okay, then it just becomes, you know, if you add one day, now you're coming back for one day. If you add two days, if you add four days.
Just make it so you have a full week, so however that would work out, so that you could have, instead of one quarter break day, you have two quarter break days in a row like we have to, you know, this week. Or, you know, there's, there's other ways of.
You can do that, but again, then my same argument is going to be the same. If I put those days in throughout the year, most of them are going to fall in before the state test. You know, because we get the state test in April. So you're not going to put those four days in the May. You're going to spread them out to the year, and then you might as well not start early at all because now again, you've taken four days and you put them into the year, which are four contact days before the state test, then you might as well not start early. And just for my one calendar, that starts, um, after Labor Day.
There you go.
That certainly makes my graduation or my, my calendar simpler, but I, I would still prefer, and, and, and again, I'll come to the board with two calendars, even if they make it legal. I, I will come to the board with two because in my opinion, better be more days than before Labor Day, or before the state test in April.
What do the, what's the buyer meeting from teachers?
Well, I can tell you, teachers would much rather start early and not go into June. And, and, and there's a lot of good reasons for that. Number one, it's after the state test. Number two, really, kids, that when that weather starts changing in, in June, and you have a couple, you've got a couple here, they can certainly tell you the, the focus of the kids changes. The state tests are done, so you can't go, you know, we still got state tests coming up. A lot of the things, now that doesn't mean that no good education's going to take place, but those days are tougher. I would, I would tell you that. And I would tell you that from someone who's gone through it. So, you know, so I, I think, I will come back. This will give you some things to think about. If the state doesn't change and we don't get any kind of waivers, then it's an undealable, and we won't have an option. But when we come to it, I will come to the board. If, if we're allowed to start early, I will come to the board with a second option. The board could say no, you know, we're going to go this way. But that would be my recommendation. I, I can tell the board that, but at the same time, that's, you know. You guys get to make that decision. I, I will do a little bit more work, and maybe it might be something that, that Laurie needs to check with the junior class as far as the graduation over Memorial Weekend. If that's no big deal for them, because there are some benefits to it, you know, people, more people coming up from out of town for that weekend because they don't have to take work off and all of that. If there's no big deal for them, then I don't think that's a bad weekend necessarily to have at all, but she may need to check a little bit more with our junior class just to see where they're at. If, if in fact we are able to start early. I wish the state would just make the decision one way or the other, but we're not there. Sorry. So we're kind of still muddling around with that. Um, we have a, trying, we have a free bid meeting for our other bids. So anybody that's going to look at it's going to come up to our roof, take a look, and then we're going to get the bids collected on that. Um, H V A C, um, same group is working with us to put that together. So we're continuing to go. Um, we've got people coming in, measuring carpets, getting that ready so that we over the summer can get rid of the carpet and put in tile. Um, budget for next year, we're working on that right now. I'm setting up a finance committee meeting for hopefully the first week in April. Probably on Thursday or Friday, the second or third, um, just so I can fill them in. I'm where we're at with the budget, where we're going, so that when we come back to the board with any, um, changes to our budget. Some people have heard beforehand, but you guys will have plenty of time to get any questions or concerns answered. Um, auditor, we've gotten a number of proposals back now. Uh, there's one that is considerably cheaper than the other ones, uh, probably a little less drills, but I'm not sure I'm concerned, concerned about the drills. I think they can do the job for us. And that's probably the group I'm going to go with. So, um, I'm going to make a decision on that unless the board wants to be more involved. But as much as anything, I want to make sure that they can do what we need, and then we look at our budget on how they're going to do it. Uh, O C R, um, Officer Wright's coming in on Thursday to do their business with us. Uh, that's one of the reasons that we were kind of waiting on the cap, five-year capital plan because if they came in and said we need to do this, this, and this, I'd like to know that before we put that plan and finalize that five-year plan, but I'll, we'll know more on Thursday hopefully. Uh, transportation contract, it's in the hands of our transportation group right now. So hopefully they're taking a look at it and probably have their comps and stuff look at it, and hopefully again, keep open. It'll be at the next meeting. But soon as we get an answer to it, then we'll, we'll bring it to the board. Um, it might be a good thing if I bring the W C E D, um, director in to do a review. We have board, new board members here that don't know much about our W C E D and our special ed co-op. So.
What's the abbreviation?
Um, West Central Ed District, I think. Uh, but it's, it's really our special ed co-op that we work with. So I think for them to come in and probably fill you guys in on what programs our students use be a good reminder for the ones that have seen it, but, you know, for the new board members, I think it'd be great for you guys to hear what they do. So I'll set that into, into one of the meetings. Uh, my last thing I didn't want to bring up, but I will, strategic plan. I do apologize to the board. I've just been buried in other things, but believe me, I have not forgotten. So, I didn't want to bring it up, but there it is. That's what I got. So any questions for me?
Want to do the strategic plan?
I brought it up just so you could, you know, um, I, I feel bad about that. I'm kind of caught between a number of things I need to get done, and, and I still think I'll get it done by the end of May, but I still have to get hustling on that. Right now, I'm asking for permission to use some forms that I want to use. So, and I have to get a couple of letters together that I get in the paper. So hopefully I will get those done this week, and then Michael has another article in the next paper, likes articles. Any other questions?
So, I, on the strategic plan.
Yep.
When Randy and I attended that meeting that we talked about in the last meeting.
Yep.
They just invited a group of people coming in.
Yep.
And they didn't start their program until they heard from the public. Should we look at that instead of you trying to put some more?
I'm going to put a survey together first. That's the one thing that I keep working on, and I'm trying to decide how complicated I want to make it. Um, I suspect that if we do that, we'll get the survey out two, three weeks of that out going into April. Um, it'll, I'm thinking simpler the better on this one, what we're doing right, what we're doing wrong, with concerns that they see, that type of thing. That'll gather more input from the community, and then you bring the other group in, and you have that as part of the information that you bring up for the big group that's coming in.
And that's the basis to, to put the strategic plan together.
It's a, it's a basis to start it, but certainly the people that are there, including the staff. Because the same meeting that we have for the community will have for the staff, for anybody of the staff that wants to be involved with that to help us. And then really, it's the board that in the end will digest everything because the, the board really won't, in most strategic plans, the board is not part of that community meeting. They're there to listen. They're there to hear. But it's really the community that provides the input. The staff provides the input. Then the board takes all of that. Because once we have that, then really, even in June, the board will get together in a workshop, talk about all those pieces, and we finalize the strategic piece.
So where we're at right now is waiting on a survey.
Where we're at right now is me getting off my duff to get some additional.
So in all seriousness, can, is there a survey out there that we just?
It's, it's pretty hard to fill surveys, and, and a lot of surveys get really complex and very lengthy. I think when you do that, you don't get very much back from it because there's so long, people's lays over. I'm really looking.
I was just trying to save you some time.
Yeah, I'm really looking, well, I just, and, and things keep coming up. The solar piece came up, so we needed to, and then I couldn't wait on that because of that, and I'm not going to make excuses. I, I need to get going on it. But I think a lot of surveys that I'm looking at right now are, are, are simple. And what I'm looking at is maybe the three, three things that people think we're doing well in curriculum. Three things they don't think we're doing so well that we could need curriculum. Maybe we do the same thing for facilities, and the same thing, maybe three or four. It, it's a little more cumbersome for them to work on, okay, because they have to actually think about what's going right and what's going wrong. But at the same time, it does force them to look at that, think about it, and put it down on paper.
So the question would be more like an essay question?
Well, it'd be short answer.
Would it have suggestions?
Yeah, well, things that they think we're doing right. I think we want to find that out, but also things that we need to do or are not doing so well.
But we'd have suggestions of things that are out there. You know, I guess I've surveyed a lot of people. A lot of people are going to look at more of an essay type of survey. Um, when people want to answer yes or no, or?
There's, there's a meaning to it. If you have an answer yes or no, you don't get as much information. You know, if, if you only have a few things that you ask about. So even if we took four, or let's say three, and each would have three good things, three bad things, or things that need to be worked on. You're not looking at a lot of things that they have to fill out.
Could you even start at the top with rates, how you rate we're doing here, and then have a section for them to fill in? Just so you can kind of get a general idea of how the community's feeling?
I like that idea.
Well, I like.
I like it.
I like, I like the ones to score.
I like it. I like that.
Yeah, and then just say, I like the details.
And, and that's why I keep going back and forth, but I'll put something together and, and I'll get it out.
A few years ago, Sartell put one out, and it had to be 12 pages long. It took every section of the building, and it, it was very suggestive. It'd be real interesting to find out what their return was on the survey.
I think, I, I, I think that people will glaze over and they'll never do it. You know, I, I just believe that. Yeah, I, I have to keep it semi-simple just to make sure to do it, because that, those are valid questions about not wanting to even write out an answer to those. I think we do it on our website, and I think we find businesses who are willing to put the survey in a little slot in the thing that says, grab one, fill it out, and drop it off. You know, so that we get as many people as, as we can. Certainly, we advertise in the paper, um, every place that we can get it out. You know, in the end, they're either going to want it, to do it or not. And then, and then the other piece is, is that we all need to work really hard on making sure that we get people into the meeting. Because that's as big a piece in where the discussion will take place as anything. Is where they're there, they're able to discuss. Uh, some people feel a lot easier doing that versus filling out any kind of survey. And, and I wish I could say there's a lot of black and white answers, but even if you have rate. And people put a three down, what does that mean, or even a four, what does that mean? You know, it, it's, surveys are really tricky. And, and you want the information you want. To me, I want to know what we're doing well and what they think we can improve on. Because I think that's what starts the discussion on where we go. And you don't always get a lot, okay, doing well. And, you know, that's part of the problem when you just have a little gill and a dot thing, is that, yeah, doing well, so, but then you get back to, well, if you want to make 100, you know, a 12-page survey, that's your other dilemma. And, and I'm going back and forth on this too, because, you know, we could pay somebody to come in and do this. It'd be a lot, simple, a lot easier for me, but then I don't want to spend that kind of money. Okay, so that means that we need to put something together, and this is quite frankly something that I mean, I'm struggling with, what's the best way to do it? That's part of my problem. That, that's my problem.
It's important enough, I think, that it's kind of all of our responsibility to get this thing done.
Well.
Then you're the head, but you might need just to give us a list of 20 people you want us to call to make sure they come to the meeting.
Well, I, I would say it's easier.
Or tell us. I don't know how to engage ourselves to assist.
You're, you're going to hear me say, I want you to get at least 10 to 15 people at that meeting. That's what you're going to hear me say. But then I'm also going to talk to my staff, and I'm going to say to staff, you know, see if there's people out there, invite them in. You know, talk to a couple of people. Just get a couple of people to those meetings. If we have 100 people there, well, I've done better than 99% of districts for that type of thing. And then we break them down into smaller groups, and we work that way. We talk to school organizations, see if we can have free babysitting. We talk to school organizations, see if we can have free babysitting that night for parents that come in, and we, we do it that way. But, you know, the problem with having too long of a survey is they don't do it, and surveys are difficult when you just rank certain things, and you say, oh, we're doing great. Well, what are you doing great at? It's like our science tests, which I always complain about because we just get a number, and, and it doesn't tell us what we're doing well in life science, or not so well in life science. It doesn't tell us what we're doing well in our science. It's, it's just, to me, it's a horrible test because it doesn't tell me a whole lot about what we're doing well and what we need to work on. But that's where a big, great piece, piece of the discussion, and the people there when you talk about it.
So, one other thing, WCED, you have raised a really good question. Is it the end of the world to write them out on this, on agenda? This is the same agenda everybody else gets when they come here. Nobody has any clue what all these things are.
We start to do it on someone, then I get busy and go into it. Yes, I'll, there is no way you should put it in there.
Okay, cause I, I think for everybody, it would help out a little bit. Anybody got anything else? Okay.
Oh, I got it.
Okay, so is the motion? Lou left the motion? Okay, I have a motion from Lou. I'll make the second, the second from Ruth. All favor say aye. Aye. Post say no.